Welcome everybody to East Dundee's regular board meeting. We're here Monday, September 20, 2021. Captain, let me take a roll.
Trusty Mahoney.
Oh.
Trusty Anderson.
Here.
Trusty Coonsy.
Present.
Trusty Burton. Here. Trusty Sagnano. Here. Trusty Triver.
Here.
And President Lyne.
Here. And if I could have a motion to allow Trusty Mahoney to partake in the meeting tonight by her own would be wonderful. So, this idea? Wonderful?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Anderson?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsy?
Yes.
Trusty Burton?
Yes.
Trusty Sagnano?
Yes.
Trusty Triver?
Yes.
And President Lyne.
Yes. Okay, and feel right to go on your floor.
I'd like to lead the Justice to reply of the United States of America in its due republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to item number four, which is public town agenda items only. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board on the agenda items?
We have a lot of us. Erin Crower from the Summit Square homeowners association township. So speak now or when we get to that item, or?
No, I can adjust. I mean, it is actually on the board, so you know, on the agenda, so.
Okay.
You're free to.
All right, thank you. So Erin Crower with the Dundee Township, but also here tonight as a representative of the Summit Square homeowners association in the address of 611 Main Street in East Dundee. So I believe for you tonight is a license agreement between the Cares Foundation and the Village of East Dundee. Again, you have several rooms that I know we've tried to sell and different things and develop over the years, and if this is the best and highest use for those rooms, that's your decision. But there is an HOA to consider and how the HOA is connected in by their monthly dues. So just if you own a private resident kind of, a business kind of the same thing. Everybody pays in dues. So the Dundee Township pays about $650 a month. Gallery 611, which is an advanced space, pays about $350. Town will circle once a week, pays up $415. With those dollars, we have monthly expenses of a dumpster for $250 a month. Building insurance, $387. A cleaning service for the county areas for $380. Aligator inspection certification is $3,300 a year, or extended to $75. And then there's a small gas bill. So about $1,300 in expenses just to get a bed and turn on the lights to that building. So I know they're considering this agreement and it states that the association or the foundation wouldn't pay any dues, but obviously we would prefer that there's tenant in there that can pay. That's the way that the building is set up. Yet what the Village of East Dundee agreed to when they purchased it is that there would be HOA payments every month. It's hurting that the village is not paying us, and I know that there were several big items that the village picked up, but Jennifer and I talked even months ago, separate from this situation, that we really need to figure out what that HOA looks like, right? So whether or not the village is in the picture in a few years, we need to make sure that the HOA is solid. So, any questions about the HOA, or? Maybe we'll talk about it. So I still want some medical samples to see if the HOA is valid. Again, about $1,300, again, just to do the basics. And also the township is doing all the mowing, they're paying off the cost for that, at least that, as well as the snow removal. So the dollar remains safe for those payments for your building.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would?
Landey Sanusi of Gallery 611. My name is Landey Sanusi, owner of Gallery 611, the same building that I mentioned. I've probably been there longer than anyone else. I was the very first tenant in there, and when I moved in there, I had different expectations with the space because I was led to believe that certain things were going to happen in there. Basically that it was going to be a business building. Over the course of my being there, I've been through, you know, some re-imaging of myself and my business because things aren't going the way I expected them to. The reasons why, you can, you know, spend some of the time discussing, but as it stands right now, I'm still down there, and I'm still functioning down there, and I'm trying to do the very best that I can do down there. What I feel though, that is that there was a point in time when I stopped paying association fees because I felt like the, because the village wasn't doing their share. If they weren't going to do their share, then why should I do mine? Eventually, over time, I found out that, okay, well, the village is going to do certain things, and I said, okay, you know, I'll try to do my thing also. However, in the course of trying to do that, I faced a lot of issues with the town, the village supervisor at the time. I'm not going to go into the example of the mowing that I received from her. All I just want to say now is that we're trying to get the building back on track. We're trying to do the right things in there. And with the place functional, have people come and not get hurt in places that they're not supposed to go to. There are places that have been shut down, that are not functional for human being, for kids to be in. However, if people are able to roam around the building because they opened these places up, my hope is that businesses that are interested in purchasing these places will be allowed to purchase it so that they can actually pay tax dollars on them, proper tax dollars on them, and also pay other business, you know, expense bills on them so the village can make money off of it, as opposed to having people move in there that are not paying, contributing to the association fee anyway, and at the same time not helping, you know, the village at large. So that is my, that is my take on it. I can give more details if I need to, but I also know that I only have five minutes, so I'm going to leave it at that if anyone has any questions for me. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Ben Schiffer of Dundee Township.
So, standing in front of Trusty on the township, that's my primary purpose for being here. Just some concerns because we have 201, two floors, and it's a fairly large portion of the building. Twenty percent is what we're contributing right now to them. My concern for me is with the HOA and the reserves that we, I don't believe at this point have sufficient. Nothing for paving, nothing for striping, nothing for big projects that could come along. And as far as I know, when you have an HOA, there's an assessment that's allotted for the entire building beginning of the year, and each individual entity pays their portion. And from what I understand, not so far, not everybody's contributing to that. So I would like for, certainly for going forward and retrospectively, there's a lot of ones for that building that are of concern. So we need some contributors in addition to the township and a couple of the entities that are currently there, because the majority of the building is greater than 50%, there's not getting many contributions at this point. And going forward, we really need to do that because if a big project comes up and goes forward, it's going to be, I mean, how do we move forward? Because there are pretty ones to do the things that are necessary. There's issues in the building right now that the town is going to address, and we would like that taken care of.
Anybody else?
Stephen White Cotton of the Dundee Township Foundation.
Hi, my name is Stephen White Cotton, I'm a member of the Dundee Township Foundation. I just want to remind everyone that I would like to see the foundation continue serving the president of Dundee Township. And I also wanted to remind everybody that the rooms that we were going to be using, we were going to be responsible for a lot of costs of those rooms. And my understanding is the village is not interested in piecemealing this out one condo at a time. They're looking for one person to buy the entire building. If that happens, we're out. For the agreement I understand, that we have to leave the building and find someone to buy the whole thing. And my point, that the condo association is not going to be any worse off than they are right now, with us using some of the rooms. And the village is going to get the benefit of the rooms being built out. Have you got any questions? Any build dog in the bit, or you know, what we're all looking to do? Do you have any other questions?
Well, probably a lot during the actual discussion of the ideas.
Susan Burnha of the Dundee Township Foundation. Thank you. My name is Susan Burnha, I'm a board member of the foundation, I live in West Dundee, and I've been a part of this community for over 50 years. I don't want to give you the exact number. I've been hearing a lot of discussion about the building and about money, both from our board, both from township meetings, and from kind of rings going back and forth with everyone. So rather than talk about money, I'd like to talk about value. The foundation has been asking to renovate the rooms downstairs in lieu of fees per month. And that, the discussion that I've heard has talked about subsidies, and that the feeling is that if East Dundee goes along with it, there's subsidizing the foundation. And I kind of take issue with that, I disagree with that, because I think that hardly qualifies as a subsidy when you have the opportunity to gain value from what the foundation is going to do for that building. You've each had the opportunity to see the renovations that have been made upstairs, and I think they're pretty significant. Capital improvements add value to the building, whereas housekeeping issues aren't exactly that. They're minimal issues that may can be taken care of in a number of different ways, open to subsidies or association fees or whatever. Gallery 611 is using this location for profit, and I have no issue with that. Township offices are subsidized by taxes, so they can increase tax so that they can present that to the public and gain additional revenue. The foundation does not have that issue. They do not have that opportunity. It's a luxury for them. The foundation benefits those in need in the community with hard work and solicitation of donations. So we are requesting your support, working to increase the value of your building as an investment and an asset, rather than throughout a subsidy of a monthly fee. And we feel that that would be a more than fair opportunity for the village to at some point be able to sell the building. Thank you very much.
My name is Chris Campboden from Garfield Shores, 605 Savannah Trail. I'm a taxpayer to township, not a taxpayer in East Dundee. Three years ago, I was still concerned about my township board and my government, because that's my only government, the one incorporated. So it's township board or county. I only have municipal trustees that I go to with that. So I've started bird dogging these meetings for a few years now, and I was astounded at the fact that Dundee Township was paying all the freight on the association. So I asked the question, I said, why is township paying and no one else? Well, East Dundee has given us like and kind services. They power a lot, they do landscape. Subsequent meetings, it comes out that the supervisor was looking for salt, but my road commissioner, who I pay taxes to also, because there's ice in the lot. I says, I thought East Dundee, well, East Dundee ain't done a thing. So I don't know if East Dundee knew that they weren't doing the like and kind services that was promised, and I don't know if East Dundee knows that they didn't pay association dues. I take offense to the fact that I have to pay on a township tax dollar for association group dues that is for the whole betterment of the building. I didn't agree with the purchase of that building. I think it was a mistake made by a previous supervisor. And then from what I'm finding out and what I'm seeing at this level, walking through the building like the previous speaker, it's, it's got open access, it's got open wires, two feet off the ground, there's code violations. Nobody can seem to answer why this building was not allowed a product to code before people were allowed to go in there and pass out giveaways. It looks like a flea market down there, like a resale shop. It's totally disagreeing. This previous supervisor just marched her own gum. She seemed to circumvent the law, little bit of malfeasance over contracts, signed her own contracts, things like that. I was told that they were looking for the lease, for the rooms that they leased from you all on the second floor. Nobody from this village to produce the lease. The township supervisor came to me for my copy of the lease, which I received from the town two months prior to it. So there's a little bit of malfeasance going on here, a little bit of circumventing the ordinances. I'd like to know why the state fire marshal hasn't walked through there. I did a CO, I did a request for a certificate of occupancy, but has been none for that building, not even the assessor's office or the township offices. I think the last election is clear that the mentality of the township government has changed, and also the mentality of the voters. There's plenty of charities, we don't need to do it with the same name as my township government. I think you're taking a free ride using the Dundee Township Foundation to confuse Hillary. Thank you.
Is that all? Any way you would consider a non-agenda item? Quick. If you can't understand. No. I'm going to motion move non-agenda items to the union. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. My name is Cliff Serge, I'm your county board chairman for District 21. Just here stirring a pot of opportunity a little bit. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Trusty Brit, Trusty Sagnano, we've been working together. Trusty Coonsy and I are just getting to know each other. But my management style between the county and the village is a series of emails that has always gone to the administrator and the sitting village president, whether that was Lail, whether that was Jeff. Jennifer and I continue regular conversations as we go forward, one of which was earlier this afternoon saying, I just worked at Heritage Fest booth where there were only two political booths, mine and Suzanne Ness. Suzanne and I spent several hours talking, and one of those conversations had to do with funding some money for a potential parking garage. I'm not here to advocate what garage, where it should go, you know, whose is it, stuff like that. What I'm here to say is, there's a lot of money out there right now. And I know that President Lyne has a meeting coming up with the county's representative, Jared Sanchez is chairing the ARPA funds. We've had conversations with Senator DeWitt, we assisted with Representative Ness. The money's available. My question to you is, do we have a parking concern? Of course I believe you do, but do you believe you do? Are you willing to take a step to say, yes, we would like it wherever it might be? Have we put together plans? I mean, have we congealed on this and we know this is what we want, this is where it's going to be? Do you own the property where it's going to go? Do you have any preliminary engineering or cost studies that we need to do this? Because truly, that bucket of money that's there is going to be gone in a few months. Everybody has their hand in that cookie jar, and we're trying to earmark, I don't know what we're trying to earmark. A million dollars? Four million dollars? Two million? We don't know what it is, but we're out there advocating, at least I'm out there advocating for this community and Trusty Brit and Sagnano. I've lived here since 1990, I was a trustee, I own Gilberts, I'm now a county board member. I've raised my family here, my office is right here on River Street. I'm invested in the community. On Friday afternoons, Saturdays, we have a parking problem. So if we can help find something great, all I'm asking you folks to do is, if you believe there is, and you can come together on where that might be, let us help you find that. Let us figure out where this could be, and let's reach out and get our hands in that jar before it's empty. And that's all I'm asking. Just point us in a direction. We're so willing to roll up our sleeves and help, we just need to go where to go from there. Jennifer, did I say what I promised I would say on the phone?
Yes.
There we go. Any questions, let me know. Thank you so very much.
Just to add, and I met with Commissioner Sanchez this morning, and basically mumbled and groaned and pleaded for money. This committee has been assigned the distribution of the money that you're speaking of. I'm assuming that was the original 708 mental health money that was coming in, 103 million?
Well, that's 708 mental health money. The first funds was the COVID funds. I sat on that committee. Jared is chairing the ARPA funds. American blah blah blah. But the first one was 97 million, split with the municipalities on a 65-45 basis. This one is 103 million coming in two different installment payments to the county. That's county money specific, but we can't spend all that. We have, so we're entertaining projects, not to mention everything else that's coming down the pipeline. So I don't perceive money to be an issue on this project anymore. I perceive it to be design placement desire, and if we can get that in line, we'll keep going to back for you guys all day long.
Well, it's going to be a partnership with a lot of the agencies, and no, we don't own the land.
That's your job. Your job. You just let us know how I advocate for it.
It is, and I'll hurry back with the people who do own it, just to try and, you know, not grease the skids or anything, but just at least find out where we stood. And they're very amenable to the idea of more parking. I haven't talked to really anybody who's, who's, could argue against it. But yeah, it's gonna.
Jeff, not advocating for where it should be. Advocating for the concept and that we can help. That's all. Sorry.
There's probably a conversation you should have with the board.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just making.
Projects that I haven't heard anything about them. Except for people saying, well, could you give me money? And I'm like, for what?
Hence, hence the knocking on the door.
Yeah, some of them recently, there's money that's been made available with the project as it actually been on our books for a number of years now, and then talk of it and so forth. So now we're to the point where we're hoping that we can bring it out, and so appreciate it, but we'll definitely.
All right, next thing, we have our list then is the agenda item, our present agenda, sorry, we've got five ones, which is okay, so take us to other agenda items. If I could have a motion for item A.
I'll move to a board. The program is, I'm going to move to a board, the 2021 street improvement program, contract to Arrow Road, construction company, the amount of $159,485, provided that the village does not receive any protest within eight days of a bid opening for by September 27, and to authorize the village president and clerk execute the contract documents in all of our forms required to enforce the contract.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, discussion?
Well, I mean, this is, this is what we budgeted for, and it's under budget, and we're going to get some roadsters.
Yeah, it's kind of like a normal, you know, road project. Still, the only task, we've been able to take advantage of whatever company was here in town doing work, whether it be overhead in or arrow or island or anybody else, to do any additional work that might be done. And I'm kind of wondering about the curving on Fourth Street behind, or right in front of where Spartan Axe throwing would be. We talked about actually putting in some curving so as to kind of hold back, or be able to contain some brickwork that would probably go in that courtyard, and if we could bring the curving to the whole length of that, of, you know, from probably only about two lengthos. Would they, would they be able to do that?
They would certainly ask for some, you know, pricing.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering.
That's a different type of curve that we had in our bid.
It is a little bit.
And budget wise, I think we're about $5,000 under, so that could be the number we would try to.
Yeah, I would certainly add to the project. Yeah, I'm sort of envisioning the squared curve, at least for the length of Spartan business there. From there down, obviously there are garages and so forth, so obviously the squared curve would work. But yeah, as far as cost, since they're here, I'm just wondering if the only way we would take advantage of that on prices and anything like that.
We had put together a preliminary graph of what we envisioned for Fourth Street there, and that's more in the $150,000 range.
Well, you want to do a rating? That's.
Doing a review of the whole street?
For the whole thing, right. Okay. Yeah, I'm just, you know, wondering about if you, you know, you can't do it now, but I'm just, just wanted to point to it and see if we can.
Start a conversation. Since there's going to be small sections.
Yeah, we've done it before, so. And even if nothing else, just, right, it's just the length that's going to go in front of Spartan, something, because, you know, you know, how about whatever future developments they're going to bring around. Because like I said, I have two to get started, very long term.
The to-do list already set that we're voting on right now?
It is.
Okay, so this will be something like.
Next door? Possibly. But since they're here, I'm just wondering, because we've been able to do that in past where they were in town, there was semester money, and so.
Well, we did that for River Street last year, or the year before, whatever.
Last year.
Yeah, last year, when we, you know, did the depot right in front of it. It wasn't on the agenda as far as, or on our list to get it done, but since, you know, they were done, we had the money, we're able to get it done, so that was nice. Same sort of thing, just, you know, see if we can, you know, just got to hold up and do it when we're, when we're able, so.
Okay, was there any other questions or discussion on this?
Trusty Mahoney?
Yes.
Trusty Anderson?
Yes.
Trusty Coonsy?
Yes.
Trusty Burton? Yes. Trusty Sagnano? Yes. Trusty Triver?
Yes.
Yeah, I can't imagine they'll have too many brokers if they've been a base since Arrow's high school, and significantly have under 20 acres, so that's good.
Yeah, takes us to Dundee if I could have a motion.
I'm making motion for the resolution, for a license agreement between the Village of East Dundee and the Dundee Township Foundation, and in regards to the use of that foreseeable portion of the Summit Square, 611, East Dundee, Illinois.
So I. Wonderful, thank you. Discussion. We just had a number of the parties about justice on this one, so anything from the board that.
I guess it'd just be interesting to see, I mean, I guess there's been some like, kind of like unwritten, close taken set of base thing that we've got going on with the association where we're providing certain levels and certain services of dual association fees, and or, you know, the foundation has done improvements to rooms. But it seems like, you know, there's other tenants that are not thinking that that's an equitable situation, so it's like, you know, the problem is necessarily with the top of the foundations with us. You know, it might be interesting to take a look and see, you know, what fees we haven't paid, but what services we have provided to see if they're kind of, you know, in sync, you know. I think it might just be worthwhile.
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit from a historical perspective, maybe Phil can, can jump in. So, yeah, unfortunately, I don't like unwritten agreements, but this is one of those unwritten agreements. It would definitely be advantageous for the village to pay dues rather than to pay and respond to regular, large and small routine maintenance items where they're often. So there's, I think the thought process was, is try to, you know, understand a little bit more is, we have a public works department, we could come in and do things with our staff, and, you know, there isn't, we're already paying them, okay? But on the flip side, when we can't do things, we're not, we don't have the capabilities, we're now paying fairly much. So it's been good and bad. It's basically another facility that we have to maintain alarmously. We had roof repair for $40,000, load remediation for $40,000, fire alarm for $5,000. Those big ticket items are thousands of dollars. We were doing more landscaping, we were doing more snow piling. The township said, let us take over the snow piling because we don't like when you show, like when you're able to show up. And so we do have to make the roads a priority. And so, we were also doing some landscaping in the past, and the township said, "We actually hold our planting, the, you know, over-suck it, or weeds." But we do, we do tree trimming in the front of the building, so all sorts of things. That's why the backs up, I mean, it's, it's one thing after another. It would be definitely advantageous for the village to get out of this handshake and bring it into a formal, regular, paid use. We would definitely save money. With that being said, you know, this conversation was opened up with the foundation, and the way I proposed the language in the agreement was that the association would pay, or the foundation would pay the portion of the village's share if we have overcharged dues. So, if the village is charged fifteen hundred in dues, then the foundation may pay a thousand of it based on the percentage of the rooms they're using. So, there's, that becomes rent at this point. It becomes unportable for the foundation. So, you know, we, we met and we said, you know, this is a deal for us, and I understood it. They don't have the funds to rent the space, they have the funds to improve the rents. That's it, and to run the foundation. So, that's why it's outlined in the memo to you, you have the options. If you, if you take the option, I believe, of charging the foundation for any dues at this point, I believe that this agreement is probably null and void, and it ends the foundation's venture that they're trying to accomplish. So, it, it is a serious conversation. There's probably some sort of compromise in the middle, but, you know, I have talked to the association many times, and I would support it to restructure in a heartbeat. But unfortunately, for the association, it's gonna save the village money and cost the association more money. So, it's not necessarily a win for them, it would be a moral village win, from my perspective, historical perspective. So, is there anything else you can think of that, you know, we've taken, done at the building?
I believe we replaced the hot water heater in there a couple of years back. As far as maintenance of the facility, we pretty much covered it in the election recall.
Just kind of the audience, right? Like, the township would just call us. It's just we're amazing people. We come and see what we can do. A lot of times, we're lining up the contractors and organizing things. I know, you know, public works is doing that, trying to figure out who we can hire, and...
I think we'd better up there, because a lot of the stuff, a lot of the stuff we're doing is like not quantifiable anyway. Like, there's no, like, quantifiable value to what's being done by, like, coming up to changing the water heater, throwing cells, you know, fixing this, doing that. It could be easier and less headaches, so it's like a big, the village pays us such a money. Now, as far as the foundation bills, whether they're in those rooms or not, we'd be paying the fees. You know, at least when they're there, they're improving the rooms for us, we might be able to sell them for a little bit more than we might otherwise be able to sell them for. So, I mean, we would be paying or providing something in lieu of monies for, like, the housing, for the, for the condo association, or whatever it is, regardless of whether the foundations are or not. So, I mean, I, I have got no problem with them being allowed to use the property, you know, because they are giving me improvements and improving our assets. Even if we are, could end up paying cash or whatever if you like.
Well, I understand that from my part, you know, I agree, I mean, we have had some quantifiable repairs, and then we replaced the roof, that was a huge one. There was rope mold remediation that we had to pick up, that was another big hit. But, I'm, I'm just, and I don't wanna get too far into the weeds on it, but I am kind of concerned with the foundation's position in that, and I'm okay with the idea too, that if you're gonna use it for the, for the period of time, we would be paying that anyway. So, if the village picked it up and restructured the HOA to bring the village in more as an equal part, or we could do that without including the foundation, I'm okay with that. But it's only a six-month gig. I can't, I mean, and you have to understand, I mean, from my position, and there's the clause in the contract that stipulates that unless we move you out within that first six months, there is gonna be no recovery of any expenses that you put in for improvement. And this is the one thing I wanted to, you know, make sure you were aware, at the last time we got together, that anything you do in the way of fixing it up is gonna be on you, and it won't be able to be recovered when you do move out. Now, if the village moves you out in three months, then, and, and as long as you get into a new facility within six and stay for twelve or older, the clause indicated, then yes, we would end up paying you back.
I think we spoke, it's at least six months. At least, it's not at most six months. No, there's been... It's at least six months of that ongoing of that.
So, you're agreeing?
Yes.
No, I, I'm telling you now, I'm, I'm struggling with this.
It's at least, at least term of, at least six months.
Right, at least.
Yes, and I'm okay with six months, but the thing is that the Village of East Dundee needs to be out of this building, and the agreement that we put in here with the foundation as an ongoing, never-ending, potentially never-ending agreement is not in our best interest.
It's a thirty-day out.
No, it isn't a thirty-day out.
Actually, I believe it is.
No, because if we move them out...
Thirty-day out?
We're going to end up paying out any of the repairs, and this is a mess.
Well, but understand the contract terms before you call a mess. It's in these six months, it's a thirty-day out. They're gonna be putting improvements into the, into the assets.
And the fault of this was something temporary, so that they don't have to close while we figure out what's happening.
Right, I do, right, if we buy a buyer, they've got thirty days to get out.
Yeah.
Yes, but if they, if we do that, then we're gonna be on the whip for any improvements that they take from the building.
If we do that within six months, we would, if we do it after six months, we would not, yeah.
Right, okay. If, if there, if there's a potential for the board wanting to allow the foundation to be in that building for a period longer than six months, then we bring them in on the HOA. That's the only...
Well, that's the discussion at that point, what we have to talk about, if we're doing the building.
It's gonna have to be the discussion before we sign this agreement.
So, that's the... No, it doesn't.
Can I, can I really ask a question? I don't know if that's appropriate. I just, is the foundation wanting to purchase those rooms after six months, or what is the plan, right? Because, again, it's taxpayer dollars, taxpayer building. The foundation surely has a business plan. What is after the six months? I haven't heard that one, it's not in the contract.
Well, they are there until we would say, "You gotta leave."
That seems like a bad deal. It's a great deal for the foundation. Awesome deal.
So, ten and eleven's meeting is they believe they would need about four years to raise the funds potentially. So, the flaw there that is in here, meaning if the village terminates their lease, then we pay them a percentage, and it goes down twenty-five percent each year, is designed to be four years. That matches the agreement that was with the township in their IGA. So, that's the thought process here. The foundation has certainly, they can speak for themselves, they have no promises that they can raise money in six months, or one year, or two years. They're trying to establish themselves as a foundation first. I think if you know any nonprofit who know how difficult it is to raise money. Everybody, everybody has a good cause, and this is another good cause.
But this is, this, we're talking about the four years is the money to buy, buy them.
Well, I think it's their hope, if they make the investment, they would be able to...
In the meantime, in that four years, you're going to be renovating these rooms. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, how much money are you planning for the, in the next four years, in renovating those rooms?
The first two rooms are obviously gonna be the most expensive, because that's when we would have to bring in, complete the electrical service and get that updated. So, the, the first two rooms are gonna cost about between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars total. That's with air conditioning, bringing them up for exit signs, battery lights, to make them so that they're occupiable by the village. Already talked to Chris. What we've planned on doing with the electrical, he's fine with, and a good portion of it is done now. So, obviously, and, and we've got some people that are, are willing to help out on the first two rooms. The only issue that I see is that if this is six months and done, we can't put that kind of money out...
No.
In six months.
It makes no sense to do that.
So, I understand that, you know, say we put that whole forty thousand dollars out. In a year from now, if you guys sell the building, we would be eligible to recoup thirty thousand. Two years from now, twenty thousand. Three years from now, ten thousand, and at the end of four years, it's gone. Is that... Jennifer, is that what you were thinking?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying up to five thousand.
Right.
Yeah, a five-thousand-dollar cap.
Which doesn't make the asset...
It's maxed at five thousand. Steve, that's what I'm saying, it's not gonna be in your best interest to do... Let me ask you this, though. If you're talking about putting the kind of renovation costs into this property, is that just a dollar a month, and that is like a sweat equity amount?
The majority, the majority of it is, we also have somebody that, some contractors that are donating part of their time and part of the materials, and we've got someone that's interested in some naming on the, on the rooms. There would be a plaque. Some of the work was donated in memory of someone.
Okay, well, that's another here and there. I mean, if they make a contribution in that respect, that's, you know, my first, that's not an issue, but, you know, I, I, this, this whole, the whole entire six-eleven thing for the Village of East Dundee has been quite a party, that we just have not been able to crawl out from under. I believe that's a great point, but what is...
Something I've seen a solution to that issue, Jeff. There's no buyer coming forth to buy it.
Well, I want to speak on that, if you don't mind, please. So, when it comes to buyers coming forward, one of the reasons that we probably haven't seen it is because, first of all, one is we didn't ask for the space, and also the fact that you want someone to get everything at once. There are big interests in people getting portions at a time, and I believe that the more we sell, the more, more people will be interested in buying other parts of it when we see how it's set up. I have expressed more than once interest in getting the spaces that are next to me. I have not been able to move forward for reasons that I just gave, the fact that I, you know, put one to, I have to get a bigger portion than I need at a time, the fact that I have to give up voting rights, which actually I was willing to work with. I have to, you know, because the village says, "Okay, we want to maintain our voting rights, we need to sell this space so that we can be able to make decisions about how the common areas are gonna be used." I have, just like they have, expressed that I would be interested in doing a phased acquisition of some of the spaces, right, and, and just kind of buying portions, but I have not gotten a response back yet. We haven't been able to move forward, and I have plans and everything. This is, you have to, beyond this, I've been in this building for, before anyone else has been, and I have reconstructed what I've been doing downstairs. And so, I have, you know, all the drawings that the village requests out of me, I've had everything completed, but I'm not able to get the financing to do the whole thing, because no bank wants to give the money for that. But I'll be able to do it in pieces if allowed to do so. And I just don't understand why it has to be all or nothing, if we're willing to work with the foundation to get portions of it, why, why other people aren't allowed to get portions of it?
Perfectly legitimate question.
And the bottom line, this is a building that was set up with an HOA. Bottom line, it's just, it's black and white, right? Tenants that are in there, when they buy, or when they're, they know that there are dues every month. So, we're, right, if the village wants to start paying those dues, we need to save money, that, right? At least we can build on this. There was an original budget set up in twenty thirteen for the HOA that never sold the right day, because there's been fifty-seven percent of the dues not coming in. So, again, this may not be the right building for a foundation. Why would you want to pay money in dues every month when you could be putting that towards food or clothing? It just might not be the right fit. They, they think it is, that's great. This building was set up with the declaration of an HOA, and I don't think you can change that.
Why do I get the feeling we're like, we're just trying to shove the foundation out of the building?
Yeah.
It's like, it's like, we're just trying to shove them out of the building.
We just want to make sure that...
The fact of the matter is, the problem hasn't been the foundation, it's been us.
Right.
It's been the village, it hasn't been the foundation.
Yeah, so...
So, the village is one of the problems.
You can, you can push space to whoever you want to, you know, space to that's fine, but, but it's...
Why don't we just start paying, bringing it in?
But, the dues.
Let's just start... I mean, I'm sure we've had to bring it up under another meeting.
So, it's fifty-seven percent of whatever we need.
I mean, I mean, to be honest, I mean, it might come in to a lot of headaches.
It possibly would.
Because I'm sure we've given value in kind, but it's probably that a buyer not appreciated or not understood. So, it looks like we're getting rid of something, we're actually spending more than we should be.
That's right.
Let's just start paying, and then maybe others get a bunch of costs.
I don't have any problem with restructuring an HOA agreement that would bring the village into it on a regular monthly basis, but I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortable using public funds that are coming into East Dundee, monies from our budget to finance or subsidize, or however you wanna phrase it, for the foundation.
When we sell the building, we get that back.
Say the ball, we're paying whether the foundations are or not. We can pay for an unapproved fifty room.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does. No, it doesn't.
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, so what I'm saying is, if there's somebody in there occupying the building, it only seems fair that we go ahead and have them pay for a pro-rating portion of the HOA, because if we're gonna go ahead and pick up the foundation's cost of that, why aren't we picking up loans? Why aren't we picking up the townships?
It's a different arrangement, Jeffrey. You're like apples and dumber pots.
No.
I mean, it's, come on, I mean...
No, we're not. We're talking about using your money and your neighbor's money to subsidize that effort, no?
No, we're not.
Yes, we are.
That's why I spit when you're trying to kick about first place.
I believe they are adding value.
I agree. They're gonna be moving, Jeff.
Well, what about, how many taxes, taxes on it? What about public taxes? Is that not something that you want to collect?
Right, and that's, that's another issue. What I'm, and...
It's just the key that the rooms are not being marketed or with a broker, right? That's, that looks, that looks...
But that's our call, not theirs.
That's totally it.
Right, it's our, we did make that effort in the past and got zero interest on it, but if you take a look at the condition of those rooms, it's not, I don't see why.
If they're the name of a toxic asset, and having done it, and making it progress is the best of a bunch of bad options. I mean, let's be honest.
From my perspective, in order to salvage it, the number one return for selling any portion of the building to the association, number one, conditions of the rooms aside, nobody wants to come in there and renovate it in association. Okay, especially through retail, I think. Okay, so first here. Number two, if we're gonna sell the building, we need to make an investment. So, it's either the village needs to budget for the investment, or find somebody to make the investment. This is one avenue to get some investment made. I'm not sure it's the level of investment that we're clearly looking for to market it, but they would not sell today. Okay, they're just not in a condition to sell, and they have been improved, but they're just, they're just not marketable. Two or three, now, across the street, they're pretty much, it's for sale, a rent. We got the dominance. We've got several vacancies that are available. I'm not sure who's gonna be jumping up and down on the association, I don't know who. Okay, so there are real-life determinants here. And we haven't had, like, a list of orders. Ali and I have talked, we're still talking about, you know, but we, we really haven't had anything. So, I think, I think the only thing they're asking for is like, "Hey, why are you not using it? Can we use it?" I think that's how you have to look at it. That's how we looked at it three years ago with the township. "Hey, why are you not using it? Can we use it? We'll make it a little bit better." That's really the question.
And then, and then...
Because there's nobody lining up, in my mind, and in my time here, to purchase this building. Like, that's too many obstacles in front of us.
What I, what I would offer up, though, this is not a slam on the foundation and the work that you're doing, but what I have seen in the way the foundation is being operated, it is not a selling point to using it. If you're not using it, let us use it, what's the harm? And that's fine, that's legitimate. But, and since we're not looking to sell it, or we can't, whatever. But the way that these rooms were being used before would guarantee that no one in their right mind would ever buy them. So, if I thought, given that...
It's a subjective opinion.
Yeah, it's not a subjective opinion. I can show you pictures of what...
Yeah, you know, I can show you bricks. They, they were taking invitations, they couldn't put them out because of COVID.
So, what I'm, so what I'm...
They're supposed to either...
No, right, and so what I'm suggesting is that maybe we weren't meet in either an executive session, or a media hall, and looked to, to put together a price that we would be comfortable with selling these rooms to the foundation board, as well as the pieces that any of the other parties were interested in, that being the foundation and ninety, you know, and just divorce ourselves of the whole thing. I mean, personally, as a resident of East Dundee, I think that's what's gonna favor the town the most.
But at the other thing, I wish for a buyer that's been able to get one. We've been sitting on that turf for eight years.
We have Aaron Crower here from the, from the... We have Aaron Crower here from the, from the township who has expressed an interest in purchasing four of the rooms. I have a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You see it now?
I won't give, we won't give a word, we'll give an offer until we know what's happening with the rest of it.
Yeah, we, we.
And I need an association, I don't need.
But what I'm saying is, we gotta do our job as far as what do we wanna sell for, how are we gonna sell, you know, is it, you know, isn't it a graduated thing where somebody buys four rooms over time, but we maintain voting rights, it's like pay for all four? Is it, or, I mean, there's a lot of ways, it's like a cat, sorry, cats.
And that's what I think we should want to do.
But in the interim, let them use the rooms. Like, let them use the rooms that aren't being sold by anybody else, because people are running up on checks and bags of money to buy from us right now.
Right, and I'm okay with that idea, in theory. What I wanna make sure of is that what we're not gonna enter into is gonna complicate anything as far as being able to get out of that and do that, so.
It's a thirty day out.
I understand that, okay, so what does a thirty day out mean, I understand?
It means we've got thirty days, get out.
We, we, within a written communication to them, based on this IGA, that in thirty days you need to get out.
Well, it's not an IGA, because their foundation is not a good company.
Well, no, but the IGA that we're talking about putting together today has a clause.
It's not an IGA. It's not an IGA, but not a good company.
Okay.
So what it would be is, they basically get a right of access to use. And if, like, we're racing down, we did find a buyer, we sent a letter saying, listen, hey, we found a buyer, you got thirty days to make things work.
And what, okay, I understand that. And what I'm saying is that from what I have seen in the operation of both the food pantry and the clothing closet, the way those, the way those operations were being conducted was not conducive to wanting to sell.
Don't do, don't do anything that's subjective.
That is not deserving of.
Well, did you see the operations, Jeff, as both were there? Because I've got pictures of it, they were pretty interesting.
Jeff, do you realize that the worst time that building's been since twenty thirteen, it's been us. We're the reason that there was a hole in radiation, because we didn't fix the hole in the ceiling for three years. The, 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 it's been us, not them.
We've got to look in the mirror.
It's not, no, I'm talking about moving forward here, looking in the mirror and talking about.
We are talking forward, we're talking about, let's, the foundation was run like a year ago, and we're trying to say, we're trying to look forward, we can keep moving back.
Well, no, we don't have any, we don't have any understanding of that anything is gonna change.
We too, I mean, we have a contract with them, our agreement, that they're going to renovate these rooms, that is a huge change from what we're getting right now, which is no. And they've, they've lived up to their obligations previously to, to renovate rooms, correct? Yeah.
They wouldn't want to make a change.
Okay, well, what I can't say is that.
The entity is changing here, the operating center are not changing. The entity, the entity we're working with is changing, the whole agreement and the operations are not changing. But in fact, because they're moving, relocating from rooms to new rooms, they're actually doing additional work that wouldn't have been done otherwise if the township still wanted to do the quote. So you have, kind of understand that, it's like, we just have this scenario, so nothing's really changing except we're getting more investment. But I am a little concerned about the, the QUAD Act here after, it is five thousand dollars.
I don't think that's enough.
If that's, you know, that was the agreement previously, so that was prior agreement, that's why it didn't.
I think, I think a QUAD, like, whatever the cap is of an actual out of pocket expenses, I mean, what it would be is you would lose sweat equity, if that's where they are. I think that's a fair compromise.
How do you, how do you put a price on that?
Very easily, you show receipts, and one alley, here.
So, Kathy, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, uh, here's the problem here, I, I, I definitely think it's pretty absurd, we're trying to prove anything tonight, I don't think there's been enough documented here. If the foundation is going to be saying that they're renovating, and I want it, and they have some idea of what the running city is, but I want that documented, number one, on what their plans are. I want Joe or Chris to review that, see if there's something that would make it so that it would get a payment, a occupancy permit based on, you know, what the current standards are. Also, in the background, it said, that there were ten rooms that they were looking at, and when I look at the floor plan, there are actually eight rooms on the first floor, and then there are four, five, six, seven that are indicated on the second floor. I just want to confirm that family out of the twelve rooms, not the ten rooms. So, I, I really, there, you know, it's always been really loosey-goosey, and I think we need to take each thing separately. I think the village needs to get an understanding of what the market value would be of the square footage, or at least a market value range of what the square footage would be on something, on these rooms. I think we need to get, not just the rooms for the foundation, but also for where the township wants to move them into. Where now that they were in three and four, did they, on the second floor, did they have a purpose three and four room? Or was that still needed to spend, or the other, and what is their, what is their offer on three and four? I believe they already have on the page four, one and two, I'm not sure of that. So I, I think a lot of things need to be laid out a lot more clearly and a lot more formally. So, and then, and then, and then as a floor, I think, I agree with whoever mentioned that, you know, we should really look at this, and we have marketed it in the last, what, year, we were marketed internally to the tri-users, and if not, it's, it's so, it's not marketed outside, that's all it has.
Yeah, I, I, well, I agree with you, I hear a notion of wanting to, you know, restructure or make it a little bit more formal, and, because it is, it is kind of haphazard, the understanding of, of what's gonna be done, how it's gonna be done, by whom, and so forth, and in what fashion as far as paying back for sweat equity, you know, I mean, that seems like a very subjective way to go about it. If we can produce proceeds, thanks, cool.
That's what I'm saying, sweat equity will be foregone.
Right.
Would you say it's an out pocket expense?
If there are documented, you know, documented proof of, of the expenditures made, beautiful. But then if someone's just donating their time, how do you put a price there?
If you don't have to, that's the point.
Well, you don't.
If it's donating the time, it's out of pocket cost, so you don't document it.
Okay.
I mean, at the very least, I think we should have a longer conversation about this, but in the interim, we love these awards.
What about other people that are also interested in portions of it? Are you considering those people too? She just wants to come with highest and best offers, you know, to Jennifer, or how would you like any offers? It's the market, the.
Well, we gotta figure out what we're selling and how we're selling, first of all. First of all, to put an offer, you gotta, I mean, the offer's gotta come from the village to offer itself.
And everybody's, it's all gonna be, you know, different. The foundation would like some, it's probably paid for years. The township seems like they have some funds, what is the building worth? Lade is, can't, it has to do a build out, which is financing issues, so she's gonna need a different structure, so. We've been talking individually. And then, I think it's something together, but it's still, I think we're still far away, you know, from actually getting that done, I mean, Lade and I have been talking for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we can, we can keep talking, bringing it back, or, you know, the village can try to determine the value. I mean, that's difficult.
Well, that's gonna be really difficult for us.
It's really your option.
I mean, to be honest with you, if someone comes paying offers, acts, you know, high inclination would be fine.
How do we determine our value for those rooms?
Right, that would be the question.
For a freezer, probably.
Do we have a freezer that we can contact?
Yeah, we, you know, we can certainly, yeah, and I think all this discussion should be in executive session.
Okay.
So that's where I would leave the discussion.
Thank you.
But I would just say that there may be ways where we could accommodate everybody in the building. You know, they may all have like slightly different arrangements. You know, it might be like, okay, she gets another room, but it's paid over like two years, and they get their rooms, it's, you know, paid over five or whatever it is. I mean, just, because again, each person, they have their own unique set of circumstances, because again, she can't just issue more taxes, they can't just issue more taxes, the township can. They want it bad enough, they can say, okay, you're paying more, I mean, which would be us paying. It'd be us paying more, but I mean, you know, I mean, I think there's different ways we could probably approach that. But again, in the interim.
It's complicated, because then the township has to have a township, a meeting, like a PIA.
Right.
This is a lot more complicated than it, it seems like, okay, buy ten rooms, buy four rooms, buy ten. It's a lot more complicated than that, so I think we just have to keep.
What I, for me, I would like to see any offers that were entertained to, to sell the suites, the rooms, the properties, whatever, to be fairly applied to any party across the board. I don't wanna give better treatment to one as opposed to the other, or the expense of another. If there's a party that wants to buy the rooms, great, here it is, but then I don't wanna just say, well, we're gonna triple the price of them because they have to be a taxing body.
Well, we're way out of time.
On our circumstances.
We're way out of time.
Are you guys still in the building right now?
Yes, we're using two of the original rooms that the township had an agreement with. We vacated the two, the rooms one and two on the second floor, and we're using three and four right now. Unfortunately, they're still on the second floor, which means the elevator up and down. But yes, absolutely, we're still using two rooms and in storing on the lower level.
But the, as I understand it, the three and four are gonna clean out and use the others?
Yes.
Is the first, one, two, three, four of that, or we're gonna be going to the township? Okay.
Yeah, but the township, we're donating to the township, four teams to the foundation, the township has not paid for it. So I, I, we need to get an agreement with the township on what they're gonna pay for these four rooms.
No, I, I agree, absolutely, I mean, if it's their intent to wanna purchase those rooms, absolutely, we have to have a conversation. And but, for my part, what I'm saying is that I don't wanna say, oh, you can have them for X and then have somebody else have them for X plus one.
That is.
And I just, for me, I would just assume, simply because the condition and the, the, the rooms themselves, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of difference in one from the other. So my thought is, is that whatever we offer as far as the sale price of the one entity, we give it to the other.
But yeah, that's a topic for another day. Right now, we have a lot of staying in the rooms.
Right, sorry.
And, but what I would say is, as of right now, because we can't figure out what the hell we're doing, we can't have them putting in forty grand dollars cash or sweat quite yet. I think for right now, we say, okay, continue your use, let us figure out what we're gonna do, or what we're doing, you know, are we gonna go out and get a praise? Are we gonna, you know, talk to all the stakeholders in the building and say, you know, in theory, what your interests be, and it's kind of coalesce the vapors of the existence of this building.
But we can't, see, we have an existing IGA with the township for the four rooms. We don't need a new agreement with the IGA with the township unless for some reason we terminate that agreement. So we have a standing agreement with the township. The problem is, it's the township's decision to let the foundation use their rooms.
But those rooms are given to the township for the foundation, correct?
Regardless, the agreement is with the township. The township then is allowing the foundation to use the two rooms because they're waiting on this agreement.
Right.
Because they have to, they have to finish the code, bringing up the code so they can move the food pantry downstairs. It's quite a process, and so they're allowing them to use it. Now, the only thing the village can do, not that I'm recommending this, is terminate the agreement with the township and give it to the foundation. I'm not recommending that, but the, but the agreement in place is with the township, so it comes to the township's decision on whether they want a private entity to be in there. They're saying no, but for a short period of time, it's okay, but they're all waiting on this agreement.
Well, actually, it's our decision, because the two rooms that we're letting them use, we let them use the rooms for the foundation, for the food pantry and the clothing pantry. They no longer wanna do that, I think we terminate the agreement with the township and give it to the foundation.
Except they don't want those rooms anyway, because if they're, if they're, they wanna be on the first floor for the food pantry.
I mean, honestly, like, our board is just ready to move out. I mean, at this point, it's just like, wow, I mean, listen to this, you wanna be in that building, you want nothing to do with it. Get it together, I mean, and we, we have said to the foundation, you've got a few months, you're using our utilities, right? The township's paying for utilities for over a year now, but we wanna give them time, we wanna make it right, we think the first floor is a good fit for them.
Right, now, when you talk about moving out, this board needs to understand, you're talking about.
We want to stop, like, that was part of our discussion.
Everything.
Like, we stop, and we just find something where we don't have to deal with another municipality or HOA. I mean, it's just, it's getting ridiculous.
We would love to do that.
It's so crazy. I mean, I can, I give the whole thing to the foundation, I don't, I mean, again, the building was set up for government and for offices and for private investors, and now it's, you know, it's not working. They changed that, because it was originally set up to be an entity that is not public, not just for public use. It's supposed to be, when I moved in there at least, it was supposed to be an office condo, okay? So any buildings, lawyers, whatever, can move in there. That was my understanding at, when I moved in. And so, what, what I, what I was trying to explain to Jennifer, and actually I sent her that email too, is that it's difficult for me to go to a bank, you know, and, and I have the, the, the means and the resource to be able to do that, but they're not gonna, they're not willing to give it to me because of the condition of the building, because of the way it's set up, and because of the kind of use. And what if I'm able to get you guys to work with me, just like you're working with the foundation, or working with, you know, the township, and say, okay, you have these supplies, and this, I'm, I'm, I've been expressing my interest forever, but it's like all or nothing. And, and while I'm there, I feel like I keep losing portions of my, of, of my property. You know, the common area has been, if you guys remember, has been used for eight eleven. And you know, all the time when we had, when I had opportunities to actually have an event outside, I wasn't able to because that property was being used for something else. And because the, the, the village has a bigger part, a percentage, I'm, you know, every single time I get voted out of anything that I wanna have happen in there. So I'm just asking for an opportunity, just like you're giving the township, or giving, you know, the foundation, so that I can also try to expand my footprint while I'm in there.
I would love to know exactly what you want, absolutely.
Oh, I, I sense, I mean, yeah.
I've never gotten any.
Okay.
Well, that's a conversation goes back years, but recently we've been talking about, again, probably not on topic, but we've been talking about how can we structure it to make it work? Okay, Garry's six eleven can't get financing for the.
Whole thing.
That's why nobody can. Because the association has been mostly defunct, to be honest. It's not, the, the village has been voted against anything, because the only time there's been meetings is if the village has called them. And so, with a defunct association, where, yes, it's difficult to get financing. That's why we're here saying, I think that's why the township was here before, three years ago, that the foundation is saying, here, saying, all right, let's do something to build it in. Why don't we something for a good cause? I'm not advocating for that, I'm hoping you understand that although these are all great points, there are no people planning up this building. Five years I've watched this, and I've seen zero activity and all problems.
And zero interest in it.
Very, very.
Zero interest.
But again, we.
The rules, the rules are really hard, you say, I have to, if you say somebody that comes in has to get everything at once, it's really hard to get somebody to buy it all at once. But if you're selling it in parts, if, if you have a better likely to get people to.
And it'd be a great finding in parts, but we gotta make it work.
I think that's a conversation for a different night, I mean, yeah, if you guys don't figure out what the hell's going on up there, and figure out how we might be able to like, do almost like a sortium of individuals and say, okay, this is how we're gonna sell the whole building. You get this part, you get this part, you get this part, whatever it is, that's not tonight, right now, we're just trying to like, A, you know, we need the township permission to use the rooms for the pantry, did I use the pantry? That agreement should be canceled.
It was for, it wasn't for food pantry, it was for storage of clothing, and it was for also training and classrooms. That's what the IGA stands for, so, yeah, it was not for food pantry.
Well, but again, you guys aren't using it for anything, so they don't need.
We're not using it right now, because I'm not gonna leave this space that I don't own.
Yeah, they don't need an agreement since they're, since they're not supporting the pantry, so. That one should be terminated, period. And then we just gotta, right now, give them a use of your kind of thing, so we can figure out what the hell we're doing.
That's what it's supposed to be temporary until we figure it out.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing.
So it, this.
I mean, just, I'm just explaining, just flat out, how much room do you need to run this foundation? Because we've got sixteen rooms, we've got eight up above and eight down below. I have had two individuals express interest in not necessarily purchasing it, very preliminary, but there are at least options that we could explore for selling the top eight rooms. Then that would leave the eight on the bottom, if that were to come about, then that would leave the eight on the bottom. To run, to run your, your. To run, to run your, your, your foundation, how much space do you absolutely have to have?
To, to run it in the, what we're doing right now, the food pantry needs three rooms.
Three.
Uh, one of them is just strictly storage. Two to actually store the food, you know, the refrigerators, the freezers, the sorting, that type of thing. And the food pantry, I'm sorry, the clothing closet would probably need another three if we continue with that. And then the rest would be classrooms. The idea of the ten was four years from now, we were hoping to be to the situation where we've got a clothing closet up and running, we've got the food pantry up and running, and we've got the ability to, to, to bring services in a couple of classrooms. We've got some lawyers that are willing to donate their time for legal advice. So if we were to, to get the, the township residents, let them know that we've got a chance to make legal advice. Accountant, same thing, we've got accountants that have expressed an interest in helping the public. So we would like to have rooms for that. That's where the ten rooms came in originally.
Okay, I get it. And, and what I, what I think this board is interested in is, I think tomorrow, you need to understand, I mean, ultimately, we would like to see us get out of the six eleven business altogether. So, but we can't hang out with you guys forever. I mean, I, I want to help the foundation out too, I do. But I don't just want to give an open-ended agreement that says, go ahead, hit the gas, don't hit the gas, it doesn't really matter, we're going to, we're going to float in anyway. You know, because we're not floating the other tenants there, we're not. And there's an HOA expense, and I don't think it's realistic to suggest that you could run a foundation out of any sort without the ability to pick up some of the expenses. Those expenses, in this case, include a fair share of the HOA. And I, I just don't think that that's out of hand. Jennifer, you just said, you thought you were speaking for the board, you just said all those things, you were not speaking for me. Just like that. Okay, then I wasn't speaking for Scott. But what I am saying is that I think if we had the opportunity to get out of this, isn't, isn't. Absolutely. You'd want to get out. But we got, but we got to get out of the world first. I mean, we're only in the passage because we haven't done the research. So. And again, without, yeah, they're beginning to use the rooms, great, but we can take more regardless. If we get the rooms approved, be of their use of, we're coming out better than we, otherwise we're being given them empty. I don't understand where this basic concept is being lost.
And I still think we do need to pay our fair share.
Yeah, I think we should be paying yours. Well, that what you're talking about, Trish, just so we know, just so we understand, is that when the village comes in to pay our fair share of the HOA fees, that in fifty-seven percent of the building, what we're doing is subsidizing the foundation?
We're not because they're going to be running the.
They're not going to be, though, you guys don't want it.
And I appreciate if you go talk to me like you deserve.
No, I'm just saying. So what I'm saying is that we have to understand that for fifty-seven percent of the building that we all.
I do understand it, and it actually makes sense to me the way we want to do it. I don't understand what.
Well, how does it make sense, though, what you're talking about doing is using.
It's like borrowing. You pay the association fee, they can use the room, they renovate it, when we sell it, there's value from what they did.
The only person who doesn't make sense to is the township right now, as far as I can tell. But we do have a motion on the table.
So, it's legal.
Go ahead. I'll call the question.
Trustee Molly?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Quincy?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Sagnano?
Yes.
And Trustee Tryer?
No.
Okay. But again, I think we do need to.
Are we, do we sell our IGA or is that what is going on, and then are we all paying to do this before I leave here tonight?
Well, that's, that's what we're figuring besides, right?
We can't decide. All right, then we're going to list improvements and a bill for the things that you've done for the building. So is that our handshake agreement?
Well, actually, so to be clear, the vote on the association dues has to have an at the association. We'd have to call a meeting, restructure the association dues, and then I vote on behalf, and I can certainly ask the board to help to vote happily.
I think we're doing that.
That's the process. It, it can't happen here, the association dues, it has to happen in our association meeting. You know where it's already located?
Yeah, we're a favor.
We, we do pay the dues.
Okay, awesome. That's great. That's great news.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I guess we'll just work with the foundation on the three and four.
I think we do need to check the agreement we gave the township that they're no longer using.
Agreed.
Well, what is that all?
Well, we have, we do have rooms that are being used, so.
That was four rooms, this is only covering two, right?
There's four rooms, there's two that are empty, and then the original agreement allowed for expansion, so we do have an office that we'd like to get over to one and two.
But yeah, those rooms were granted to the township to use for the pantry and the food.
It was for, if, that first is the thing, I guess, is you don't understand how it's, maybe you can explain better how it works in terms of, what the original IGA was for. It was for storage.
Clothing, the clothing, the clothing closet. However, after reviewing the agreement, I don't think it's absolutely clear.
So I bet when the board came in, they talked about the clothing closet, we voted on it.
I think it might be, we can't do anything to make, advise to entertain a discussion with the township about what they, they would like to purchase the rooms.
Yes.
So maybe entertain that discussion. I mean, if, and if they should be terminated, then the foundation can't use it without another document from us.
Honestly, like. Because then we're not providing, so we have, we're maybe telling, I realize that they're using it, there's no agreement for it. Which is really nasty and very.
I guess my point is, you might just explore the purchase and then come back and mark the reasons, and then decide if you want to terminate the purchase.
Yes.
Just explore it.
Yes, explore it.
Okay.
So maybe, Ken, I'm, so just real quick, so the original agreement, as my understanding of it, was for the closed closets, which was a done-to-township function, but supposed to be staffed by the foundation. So during the interim, all of a sudden, we had township staff that was doing a large amount of work for the foundation, which was not the original sort of design. So things have changed a little bit, but the design was for clothing, clothing closet, and then it sort of expanded there from the previous supervisor.
He has to know, but the village didn't know there was a foundation to be perfectly on. The village thought this was township function.
And, and our agreement says there's no third-party beneficiaries of that agreement. So in the IGA, it says strictly, there's no third-party beneficiaries for that, and that should be enforced by the IGA.
And that's, yeah, we were under the, the township petition from village to run a clothing closet, not a foundation. The foundation came much later, I think.
Yeah, but I thought the foundation was a necessary arm because the township itself couldn't take triple.
It could have been, yes.
That, I mean, we're using it as a practical.
Well, inside the IGA, we did, there was no foundation, the foundation didn't even exist. We didn't know at any time that a foundation had been created. I was not aware of that.
None of us were, and that was a real blur.
So I think that, you know, we did too. From our, from our perspective, we don't mind canceling this IGA. I just want to know, from your perspective, what are they giving up? Are they giving something up if we cancel that IGA?
They want to use four rooms.
Yeah.
Because we are out of an office space, yeah, like I said, that's, I mean, the purpose was for office space.
Yeah, so we don't want to cancel.
We prefer not to.
Or at least revise it.
Our expert is to suggest that we revise it, just because three, four, again, it started with. We don't want to have the liability of what a foundation is doing. So that, so really, like, one and two, we can revise it, just the same one and two right now until the foundation moves out. But then, yeah, you have to have a new one with the foundation for three and four. So if you want.
There, there is unperpetual interest in those four rooms, so.
Of the township.
But from the now, yeah. And.
So just so I understand, so the, the vote that was given today was to approve the license?
Correct.
Is that what that was for?
Yes.
Okay, so they can start working. So they can start working on the rooms, on where the rooms, I just want to understand what it's for.
Yes. In terms of the agreement's keeper itself, I mean, it's, we approved their use of the rooms.
Their use of the rooms, okay. At what point can I present my proposal? I've done a pre-proposal, but at what point can I do that? Is that another discussion for another time? Can I, how am I going to do that?
Yes. You have to, if you want to put something together for, you're talking about a proposal.
I actually sent something, and I, I sent it to you.
Right.
I, I proposed what I would, the rooms that I would like, and what I would have to do with them, and what order I would like to fix them. And, but I didn't get a response. And so what I'm saying is, I just want to have a fair, you know, opportunity also for the rooms that, at least that I'm interested in, to be able to have that proposal, and if I have an opportunity to be able to discuss that so that you guys can tell me, yeah, or no, just like.
But, but yeah.
So you said to the whole board, I'm sorry. When she proposed it, she thought she could get financing, so we.
No, no, no. No, that was before I had to get everything at once. My proposal now is. Yeah, my proposal now is, is, is broken into phases. In other words, I have, I can do the big room now, I have the financing for just the big room, and then in six months, I can do the back rooms because I have to serve that, and then once after that, I can do something else. So I'm not able to get everything done at once, but I can get them done in phases, and that was the proposal I sent. I can resend it if you would like.
Yeah, that would be, it would be a good idea to get your proposal and a township proposal, and then the board should discuss it, the best practice would be to discuss it in closed session, which they are able to do, and formulate a response to those.
Okay, thank you very much.
But either way, your, your proposal that you're speaking on includes purchase.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes. No, we should be getting proposals from the towns to purchase rooms one through four on the second floor.
Right.
We should be getting a proposal from the foundation for whatever member of rooms specifically that they think they can put together, as well as to be able to weather on their proposal, unless they're, for this, the rooms that they are, are looking at.
Right, so I agree.
And it should be, it should be a request of proposal, easy.
Yeah, I agree, Ken. Tell us what you want to do.
I, I mean, we should, we should be negotiating, I, I, I think it's good that we have this conversation, but we should be negotiating and making decisions and overseeing without any, any kind of, you know, specific plan or offer from the people that are interested.
Yeah.
That's why they're willing, that's why they're willing to go.
Right, I, that, that makes sense. So let's go ahead and do that, so for the parties involved, you know, just send us a quick, you know, exclamation or proposal, maybe you already talked about an email sent out with that phased-in proposal? I don't recall reading that.
Okay.
I will send it out.
I remember the first one.
I'll send it out.
But yeah, if you want to put, you know, Aaron, you can go ahead and put together.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to read it then, so we'll be, we'll be, so we'll get it next month.
Right, and, and what I really think the board ought to do is entertain, and I think Jennifer made a note on this one, was to actually entertain getting some sort of appraisal on, on, as there are if we can. I mean, if we're talking about selling, let's just see where we stand. But talk about it.
You don't need to get an appraisal legally, you can wait, make that decision once you get the offers. Okay, then decide whether, in light of that.
That makes sense. You know, well, and, and, okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, from a square footage standpoint, whatever it is, we're being fair, that, you know, we're not going to sell to one entity for twenty-five thousand dollars, and we're going to sell to another entity for twenty-five.
Yeah, you don't need to do that. The issue would be if you get enough for it, you could always, you can equal whatever it is, you had a lower number under the script. It might not be fair to the taxpayer, but it's fair to, you know, people like.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, yeah, if it, that would be, you know, we'd have to look at the number of. Right, right. And for my part, I would like to see that the taxpayer is at least considered.
I concur.
No, I mean, we, we tend too often to leave them out of it, and, hey, it's, they're, they're.
Are you Jeff's?
We do not. We're not talking about, we just were born, I'm talking about we're politicians at times. Hey, Jeff, can you say that a little bit? Okay, great. All right, so we're, we're, is, can I, anyone?
I think then I resend it, I get the emails, they send it to us. Thank you very much.
But I said, I said.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I would see is, Constitution Week, September seventeenth to twenty-third, this is really a recognition, uh, we were asked to, to announce it for the celebration for the week, seventeen to the twenty-third, and for planning Constitution Week, so that's what we are doing here, so. So moving on then, two thousand and seven is our financial reports, you have your warrant slips, you can go through those, any questions? Just either Jennifer or Jennifer. Uh, we start with village reports, which I'll start out. Um, this weekend, Oktoberfest, again, we probably are in need of many volunteers as we can, so if you're able to.
I just pick the variety of stuff at the time.
Oh, so if you can, volunteer great. If you can. We wish to come out and.
Volunteers, is there a minimum age for?
For volunteer, volunteer. What's it?
What's the age?
Sixteen.
Uh, maybe not, because we do have, we have like inflatables to keep an eye on, however, like we have riots, and we need people for that. I would say probably no to the alcohol, obviously, carding, but I don't, I don't see why not, we need extra bodies.
What do you think, Mike? I'm not saying this, look. And so if, if volunteer, at least, you know, come out and, and, you know, break heart anyway. Uh, the only other thing was, Phil, you and I have been in contact with the idea of the river cleanup. You indicated that that's begun, okay.
The tree trimming and removal of undesired vegetation and stuff, that's, 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 that's last week.
How's that?
Uh, last week, Thursday, I believe.
It started early?
Yep, Thursday, Friday, and then today.
I toured it, and I saw one clump of what would be saplings and shrubs, or not shrubs, but, you know, saplings, a growth of them, that were clipped at about, at the stems, or the stems, little trunks, if you will, two inch, two, half, three inch, whatever, about two feet off the ground, a little on the dangerous side, but a little bit, you know.
I'll take a, I'll take a look.
Yeah. Yeah, they're worth every day. I'm thinking. Yeah. Bad ones.
Cool, cool.
So, uh, yeah, and then the only other thing was the, I wanted the topic to us, but he didn't make it, was about seven, eight lanes, so I'm gonna touch base with him on that. Other than that, I have nothing else, so go on, uh, Sarah.
Sarah.
Scott.
Uh, just a couple of statements. Uh, one, you know, at some point, we need to put on the agenda how we're gonna handle the gravel parking lot issue in our town. We've got a couple of them that were supposed to be, that were supposed to be addressed or gone before adjudication or whatever it was. Also, I guess, just kind of piggybacking on quick service and communication. You know, we've got this amazing asset at our town that looks like garbage, that's our river front.
Yeah.
And if the town is so flush with cash, they're just dying to give it to us, let's put something towards river fronts. And if we are, I mean, we keep hearing about these, these parking structures that none of us have heard anything formally about. I've heard, I've heard whispered rumors of dark ruins a lot for three years, but I've never actually had it be tangible.
Six?
And, well, whatever it is, fine, even worse. But now, but now we're taking pictures with people with certificates and everything else, because it's a done deal, and it's not a done deal, and, you know, my thing is, you know, why would we be paying for a two-level parking structure for the same money? We could actually do two gravel lots, and, hey, all the problems can solve at once. So let's, 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 let's start having those conversations rather than just talking about them like they actually exist when they don't. And that's all I have. It's worth the progress. Scott, let's get started.
Uh, yeah, okay, so Phil, thanks. Phil helped me out this weekend. I did, took part in the Friends of the Fox River cleanup this weekend. Public Works provided some garbage pickers and trash cans and gloves and things like that for us. Uh, we had six people out, and we went from Rosie's down to Seventy-two, and then a little bit beyond, behind River Leaves. Uh, we put out over ten big bags of garbage, the tractor tire, I'll switch this up. The, uh, one thing I noticed, though, behind River Leaves, there's a parking lot there, it's obviously guarded, they're on. There's an incredible amount of garbage. There's an incredible amount of garbage in that, in that strip of grass between the river and the park. We picked it up. I'm just wondering if the village would think it would be a good idea to put a garbage can there, even though it's not our property. Uh, the garbage is there. Regardless if we put the can or not, the garbage is there, it's going to continue to be there on the ground. If it's in, if it were a can there, there's a chance it goes in the can. I don't, just, oh.
Is that, was that like a lot of tavern trash, or was it just general, or?
Like, just general junk. I mean, I mean, that can be specific, but you all- I don't get the first part of the question.
Well, was it like, was it like tavern trash?
What tavern trash?
Well, it was just kind of like general junk, but I wonder if-
Well, it's a very scary.
It would be cool, but they're not gonna use it, they're not gonna use it, you know.
Wow. But yeah, um, it, the garbage is there anyways. Sure, sure. Yeah, uh, you know.
It's, it's, it's a privately owned lot.
Correct.
It's been on the owner to, to clean up the garbage, and I believe this is the same lot you're referring to that we already have, if it was that, um, I think Chris was working with that on.
It is the same, yes.
So, did they just move all the garbage over to the river front? Hopefully it was worth it.
No, that's possible, yeah, and it would be disturbing if they did, but yeah, you don't know.
Maybe they could have used it to fill in the pot.
We, we, we were talking to Trish about this, it was the same one, I think. So, that's, that's a good point, so.
I know, I think we would be fighting them or, or fighting them until they get, they get the habit going and, and they, they maintain and they, um, become a good neighbor.
Right, agreed. Yeah, it's pretty worth it, I think. Um, I guess that's, yeah, Kathy, do you have work, do you have anything?
Um, no, October 4th, this weekend, I'll be down there at five on the hearing and four and, um, um, it, it would be good if you kept me as far away from the bounty house and take care of his house.
I can understand that. We can look our best.
I hope I live it.
Catherine, can you make a note of it?
She's not first.
Great, thanks, Kathy. Rich?
So, great weekends last weekend with, uh, parish best in West Dundee. Uh, big shout out to all local municipalities, police, uh, police, fire, uh, east-west Dundee Harbor, original, that we're a little managed and massive type of crowds, and, uh, people community looking, looking nice. I, I can't speak for anything that, that went down, but it seemed like it was really a good crowd we had, so.
I already worked on, uh, a lot of smoke, I don't know if anybody saw that.
They got, boy, they got twenty-two.
On the river.
There was a jackman in the river, and it just was hanging in here.
But yeah, other than that, nothing.
Okay, great, Trish?
Um, though, to be honest, there's a lot of sports, I'd like to work on, and I mentioned something to Kathleen and Sarah about it, but I'm really inspired by Elgin's art council, the things that they do, painting, there's, there's street trades, and like, all these awesome things to bring color with their town. And since we're becoming more of like a destination type of town, I think we'd be really cool to have an art council or something where we can get those ideas together and go and beauty, like, beautify things and have something that people wanna come see, well, about heating and that stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I like to, I like to buy, I like to be, yeah.
Cool, yeah.
All right, great. Does anyone else?
No.
Great. Uh, Jennifer?
Um, I, I, I think we pretty much covered it. Um, I just, also, if we are going into executive session, if we could just put the sale of the property on there, just real quick, about a minute.
Six eleven?
Thank you, yes.
Uh, Joe?
I don't know.
Have you called High Street, Christine, the driver?
Christine, the driver, I haven't heard.
Um, the latest on, on that, is there's a soil sample, uh, test that is, uh, holding it up, and it actually came back with, um, the test, I believe, so they will know on what's their first name, and it sounds silly, um, but it could be, the result could be a construction season next year. I mean, that's, that's how tight the timeline is, so that, that's the latest on it. High Street items are going before the fancy on October seventh.
Village turn? I have not, uh, Phil?
You'll talk soon.
Alright, alright. Okay, so that could lead us to, uh, I'll comment on my journalism, so anybody who would like to address the board on it.
No, you can just stop with me.
Alright, we'll get one up anyway.
Alright, so that takes us into executive session, and we're gonna have one, and we'll adjourn to it, so.
I will make a motion, I will make a motion to the executive session, quote, "The public media provision development meeting, Zack, apply I L C S one twenty-four slash two." Subsection C one, personnel and legal counsel, um, C six, sale of property. Do we have anything else we need to put on it?
I don't know.
Okay, and then, then we will adjourn from executive session to the office management session.
Sarah?
Sarah?
Okay.
Trusty Paulie?
Yes.
Trusty Andreessen?
Yes.
Trusty Quincy?
Yes.
Trusty Burton?
Yes.
Trusty Sadianno?
Yes.
Trusty Trevor?
Yeah.
And Wes and Mike?
Yes, okay, so we'll take a quick five, thank you all for coming, and a school break, file break.
I'll stay on the line.